Good afternoon, everyone. The special board meeting of the Governing Board of Education is called to order by myself, Emile Barham, at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, July 29th, 2025, at the District Office Conference Let's move to approval of the agenda. Are there any requests for changes to the agenda?
I have a request.
Okay, Mrs. Weirzma go.
I would like to make a motion to agendize board comments at the end as per CSBA guidelines that really emphasize the importance of each trustee having a role in speaking to things sometime during the meeting. And I think that's best practices. It's what we've done in the past, and I'd like to see that changed.
Okay, so you're looking for board comments at the end? Is that what you?
Correct. I'd like to make that motion.
Okay. Well, this agenda was approved some time ago, and so I'm going to... So you asked for a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I think the one thing I'd like to point out in putting forward this request to three minutes is I know I did not have the honor to be on the committee, and I'm assuming there will be people who will speak a little bit more into this, and I'm interested in what they have to say. But that's my reasoning and thinking three minutes would be a great way to wrap up at the end for each trustee who wants to speak.
Any other discussion? Linay, let's call the question.
Schwartz.
No.
Weirzma?
Yes.
Kamroski?
Yes.
Barham?
No. So the vote is two to two, which means no decision on that matter. I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Go ahead and call the question.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Weirzma?
Yes.
Kamroski?
Yes.
Barham?
Yes. The motion is unanimously approved. Okay, so this is open session business meeting. In attendance this afternoon are the Governing Board, Dr. Woods, and the executive team. We will now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Schwartz, would you like to lead us?
I would love to lead us. If you're wearing a hat, please remove it. Put your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Class sit.
Okay, so let's move on to information and reports, the Accountability Subcommittee presentation. Under our rules, we allow for three minutes for a presentation. So what I am looking to do is take one and a half minutes for myself, since I'm on the Subcommittee, and allot one and a half minutes for Dr. Kamroski. That'll be three minutes. I'm hoping that because this presentation is for our superintendent and for the directors and the staff here, that other board members would forego their two minutes on this presentation, this part of it, because there's going to be plenty of opportunity to speak into what the superintendent has to offer tonight. Like I said, this is really about him and the staff, and so I'm hoping that Mr. Schwartz and Mrs. Weirzma will forego their two minutes, although if they want to take it, they're more than welcome to do it. Okay, so I will present for one and a half minutes. Linay, thank you. So upon meeting the superintendent for the first time, within 20 minutes, we were talking about accountability and how important it is in any large district, but particularly in a school district. Without strong accountability mechanisms, student achievement and academic growth, they suffer. And so this is seven months of work on accountability and goals, which I am so happy to have been a part of. I've worked in districts where there has been lax accountability, and the results have been not so great. And I've worked in districts with strong accountability mechanisms where student achievement and academic growth thrive. I have appreciated my very small part in participating in this process. I came with a vision for accountability, and the superintendent and the directors, you flipped, you changed all of that. And the final product here is so great, and I'm so proud to have been a part of it. And I really, I really want to thank you guys, and I'm looking forward to the discussion that we have here. So, thank you. Okay, Dr. Kamroski?
Well, I wasn't prepared to give a minute and a half speech. I was going to interject throughout the meeting, but I'll wing it like normal. It's all right, though. So I'm into Texas barbecue. I was listening to a smoker today, very famous in Texas, and he said, "If you're set up for success, you're going to have a..." Sorry, "If you're not set up for success, you're going to have a hard time finding it." Well, we are set up for success, and this is what it looks like. When I met Dr. Woods, you know, long ago when we hired him, the one thing that I stressed and I made vocal is we need new leadership with new ideas, and we're looking at it. So the previous board readjusted the mission, vision, values. The values are the rudder that steers the ship, the process by which the ship navigates, that's our mission statement, and where we're going is our vision. And this Accountability and Responsibility Subcommittee that I was a part of, this is nothing more than an extension of our mission, vision, values. Who is involved in that? The students, the staff, the teachers, the governing board, all of us. So now this is a reflection of that. When I first met Dr. Woods, one of the things that impressed me is I come from a long line of farmers. My dad, my grandparents, all from North Dakota. Well, Gary was raised on a farm, so I immediately knew that he had a strong work ethic. In fact, he said he did. And one of the things that he did, boots on the ground, right when he got, you know, sworn in, he, in the first six months, what is it, visited 123 documented site visits. Oh, my gosh. Well, wait, wait. You know what? Let me wrap up the sentence at least.
Okay, quick.
He visited many, many, many sites, and he asked three basic questions. Tell me what you like about the district. What are you concerned about? And if you were me as a superintendent, what's the first thing you would do? So he has depth and breadth by getting on the ground and talking to people. And so this is a further reflection of his leadership and how he worked with staff.
Thank you, Dr. Kamroski. Mr. Schwartz?
I'm good.
Mrs. Weirzma? Okay, perfect. All right. I'm going to turn this over to you, Dr. Woods.
Test, test. Very good. Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. I'm going to get a little close. We've got a lot of online lookers, but you're here physically. You're going to make this thing successful. It won't be me, because we're going to have a conversation. So do not be afraid to raise your hand. We want you to participate. We want the board to participate. We have our brand-new student board member, Melissa Chai, over here. And we may ask you, what do you think is the student perspective in this? Because, you know, quite frankly, none of us have this exactly dialed in. This is a continual process. This is, in my opinion, this presentation really is just the beginning. Now, Dr. Kamroski, Mr. Barham, we've been working very closely together for six, seven months on this. It really was the first meeting that we had. This is a huge interest of mine. I love trying to figure out how very complex organizations can do their very best. It's a fascination of mine. I'm passionate about it, but it also represents purpose for me. That's my purpose for being here in this beautiful town of Temecula. Let's go right on to the first slide. Okay, if you look at this, you'll see a lot of words, but it's broken up into four major categories. Actually, Ms. Weirzma, Dr. Kamroski, Mr. Schwartz, Allison Barclay was here at the time, and even Danny at the very, very beginning, they put together this document. Because the question I was asking is, okay, what's the purpose of the board? What's the vision, the mission? What do we believe in? What's the tagline? How can we be consistent in the way we talk to each other? Well, through that process, these four pillars came up. And actually, I see a couple of you in the room. I spoke to a couple of you, community members that are in the room here right now. When we were digging on this, we also met with a group of students and dug pretty deep. I also met in this room with a group of teachers, and we dug really deep with them and got consensus. The board came together. We approved this. And I take this language very, very seriously. Look at the pillars. What stands out to me is the parent and community engagement has to be there. Parent and community engagement. Experiences, high-quality teaching and learning. We all believe that. Care, prioritizing school safety often is something that we really focus on. And then there's opportunities that we have for kids. I like the idea of connections. We have to make connections. And before I go on, I see my beautiful cabinet sitting right here in front of me. I have to introduce them. Dr. Velez, Mrs. Diaz, Mrs. Lash, and the Francisco R. Say. They've been critical in all of this, and you'll get to hear from them in a few minutes. But you have to start somewhere. So we started this, in this area, about a year and a half ago. And if you notice, Jimmy and I, I saw Jimmy a few minutes ago, Jimmy and I ran around every week and did videos. How many of you saw some of our videos? How did I end those videos? This is Gary Woods doing my part to elevate students and staff each and every day. That came directly from this and from the board's direction, and it's been very consistent. It's going to change this year. I'm going to be putting in the word happiness, and you'll know why. I think happiness is a competitive advantage for an organization. It's well-researched, huge body of research. If you're happy, you're performing well. That means you're engaged, you believe in who you work with, and you want to do your best. So happiness will become a competitive advantage for us this year. Let's move on. Oh, actually, hold on, stay here. I want to turn it to Joseph, Ms. Weirzma, Mr. Schwartz. What do you remember about this? What was important to you?
One thing that's on there is the vision statement. TVUSD strives to create high levels of learning in a welcoming, collaborative environment for our future leaders. I'll speak to this later, but on the next slide, we're going to... or, sorry, two slides from now, we're going to be talking about our future leaders. Why are we doing all this? It's not just to get them out and graduate them at TVUSD, it's what they're going to become flourishing future leaders.
Very good.
So that's what I take out of this. It's an exciting vision that's robust.
Mr. Schwartz?
Former teacher, and I still think I'm a teacher, two things stand out for me. Professional development, so everybody who is teaching a particular subject is up to date with whatever the latest materials and curriculum we're using. Everybody's on the same page. If you go from Margarita to Vale Ranch, as a student, you're going to find the same thing going on. And the other thing is fiscal responsibility, making sure that every dollar we spend is on a need and not on a want. And having sat through many budget meetings with Mrs. Lash and her staff, they consistently focus on our needs and not our wants. For me, that's really important as a parent, as a board member, and as a taxpayer.
Very good. Mrs. Weirzma, anything?
I'd like to say I love under care that we prioritize school safety and maintenance. I think with Mr. Brian Pastor on board and working hard to oversee a lot of what we can do, whether it's having those SRDs on campuses or expanding the watchdog initiative where we bring parents onboard to help us on the campuses, that is crucial, because if we all work together as a village and we want to keep our kids safe, there's multiple layers in that. So I really appreciate that aspect, and I know parents care that we care about school safety.
I knew you were going to pick that one. You're very consistent in that area, but it's so important. If we don't feel safe, we can't learn, and a lot of other things. How about cabinet? What are just, if you can think of a couple things that really stand out to you?
Under the category of leadership, one of the things that the Human Resources Development Department...
Under leadership, we have set clear standards for respectful and professional conduct. One of the things that my team in the Human Resources Development Department does is work with site administration, work with department managers to make sure that our employees know what those standards are. We have the highest of expectations. We actually have board policy and administrative regulation. And at times when it's needed, you know, taking corrective action and all that, but what I'm really proud of is we are not just the Human Resources Department, we're the Human Resources Development Department. And so that means working to support staff and encouraging, motivating those positive interactions with students, and the kind of interactions with students that make them proud of their teachers, their employees, their staff that on a daily basis go out there and make an impact on students. So that really resonates with me.
That's good. Anyone else have a...
I think it's important to note, especially the language in red on this document, that we've taken it very seriously. And especially when you consider Student Support Services and even if you just take the CARE quadrant, it's pretty much what we do every day. But what I want to note is the importance of every single one of these categories. They cannot exist by themselves. So we can't have leadership and experiences if we don't have the CARE. We can't provide opportunities unless we have the experiences and leadership behind the opportunities we're providing. So all of these require one another in order to exist.
Very good. Dr. Velez?
So there's two that really stood out for me. One is under leadership, which is emphasize professional development. From the ed services standpoint, we probably offer well over 100 professional development opportunities for our teachers, for our assistant principals, our intervention administrators, our principals, everyone in between. We offer professional development, and in fact, today, we actually brought in all of our new administrators, our assistant principals and intervention administrators that are joining the TVUSD administration family for this upcoming school year and put them through a full day of professional development, which actually leads me into experiences of high-quality teaching and learning. And our day was spent with them really on the six ed services core values of what we believe in, and then we're really laying the roadmap for them of what it looks like. Those are the two that... There's a lot that stands out, but those are the two that really stood out, and particularly in the work we did today.
Excellent. Ms. Lash, do you want to say something real quick? Ms. Chai, I'll give you the last shot on this one.
To no one's surprise, of course, fiscal responsibility stands out to me. What? And that's not just about having, looking at, focusing on a bottom line, but honestly, understanding that every school district in the state of California has finite resources, whether it be dollars or people, and how do we maximize those existing resources so that we're getting the most bang for our buck, and we're providing the absolute best experience for students with those limited resources. And we do that through, we take an incredible amount of time making sure our financials are accurate, so we're making those great decisions. So I love that the board listed it as a value, because it helps set a structure in which we all acknowledge there is fiscal responsibility involved. But actually, the other one that speaks to me is parent and community engagement. I feel like I have a great understanding and voice in the district, not because of my position necessarily as the Assistant Superintendent, but as a parent, I'm constantly receiving communication from my kids' teachers and from my kids' principals and from the district office, and so I'm constantly being engaged and feeling like I'm in the know as a parent, not just an employee. So I love that.
And Dr. Durico, thank you for being our mic person. Ms. Chai, I'll give you the last crack at this one.
Great, thank you. So as a student, I feel like under the experiences category, I think that it's extremely important that we value enhancing college and career readiness, and I like that that mentions and career readiness. It's not just college, because although I would personally like want to follow the path and go to university and enter the workforce through that pathway, I realize that that is not the only way to be successful in life. And I've also taken like some classes through CTE pathways at Chaparral High School, and I know that there are different, a lot of different, like job-focused pathways at all of the TVSD high schools. And I think that it's extremely important and so good that like students are able to explore those different fields and understand that it's not just like one way to success, that they're able to go around and find what makes them feel fulfilled in life.
Isn't it nice to have her voice? Good job. Well done. This is where we started. A year and a half ago, we had to hammer out this language. We used as many people as we could to get to this point. We've used this now consistently for a number of months. We even have a special committee that came out of this called the We Elevate Committee. It's the only one of its kind in the district. It involves leadership at TVEA, CSCA, and the district. And guess what? All we do is talk about ways to encourage, add positivity, and show people that we appreciate them. That's our only real purpose. One of a kind. New slide. So from that, Dr. Kamroski, Mr. Barham got involved. We had set the tone for vision, mission. We had the language worked out, but now we needed to really focus in, in this case, which would be number six. But I cannot talk about number six in isolation. We all have to understand, and there are probably will be a number of comments coming out of the directors here in just a minute. There are a number of categories in an organization you have to be aware of. And if you look at the symbol, what do you think that is? What did we use? What is that? It's a gear, okay? It's just one gear. If you really did it right, there would be hundreds of gears. In fact, number six would have 15 gears of its own. Number five would have multiple gears. All these gears are working together. They all have to be coordinated. They all have to be aligned. The timing all has to be there. If one little gear, even a really small little gear gets messed up, the whole thing shuts down. And I think this was the foundation of our conversation when we first started meeting, is we had to recognize, okay, we got to be careful here, because we can blow this whole thing up if we're not careful. And we accepted the fact that there are a multitude of gears. Number one, culture and climate, these are like the main categories in a district. Student outcomes, huge. Attendance is huge. Instructional practices, enormous part of the district. Safety, once again, critical. You got to have safe schools. You got to feel like you're going to school and it's going to be safe and possibly be fed and all those other kinds of things. And then, of course, strategic planning and accountability involves a lot of times curriculum. So Dr. Velez would be very involved in that part of the conversation. But I know there's, could be a couple out here in the audience. Tell me what you want to say about the gears and about organizational structure and how complex it really is. Anybody? Go ahead, Mrs. Lash, and then Jimmy back there.
So when you think about, let's say, instructional practices or student outcomes, Business Support Services isn't necessarily the division that may come to mind. But in the vein of gears, I have a number of directors here that I will pass it on to, but it's, we are supporting the entire student from the moment that they start their day until they end their day with us. And so we are a support system of those student outcomes, even though we're not the first instruction. So I'd like a few, a couple of my directors here to share their...
Who wants to go first? Jason? Okay, Jason wants to go first.
I think often when I think about that, we serve as a support to the students and to the staff. And so if I look at like my department, for instance, Maintenance and Operations, my folks are responsible for the three and a half million square feet that are in this district. It's a lot of space and over 700 acres that our campus is occupying. And our job each day is to make sure that those are well-maintained, that they're cleaned, that they're ready for students to come. And then beyond that, we get to help enhance some of the instructional practices. I mean, this summer, we put up over 500 whiteboards for vertical math. Last year, we put in dance rooms to support middle schools and the things that they do. So a lot of times when we talk about instructional things, Business Support Services comes in to support those and to help them move forward. And our focus is always on the students. I mean, yeah, we do a lot to support our own staff and to help them and to make them, provide care for them, but our focus is always with an eye on a student. In fact, in our department, we have the motto, "How do the decisions we make affect our students?" Because we feel they're our students, and we feel that it's our job to make decisions that benefit them.
That's our Director of Maintenance and Operations. We owe him a huge round of applause, especially in the summer. Thank you, Jason. Lee, how about you, sir?
Yeah, I'll jump in for transportation.
Transportation.
You know, I think there's the obvious data points that everybody looks at for transportation, right? We, for general education students, we transport about 1,500 kids a year. For special education, we have over 500 at peak that rely on us just to get to and from school. But oftentimes, we kind of forget about maybe the intangibles. One thing that we often emphasize in many of our trainings, certainly at the beginning of the year when we have our whole group together, is, you know, my staff, being a bus driver or an aide, is the first person of our district that some of these students see in their day. And what is the tone for the rest of their day going to be? Whether you're a general education kid at Chaparral Belavista or a special education student across the district, right? And in the afternoon, how are we sending those kids home, right? So we often need to think about those experiences and make sure that's built into our processes and how we consider what we do for our students. And then some of the other things that were touched on, you know, Mr. Schwartz mentioned fiscal responsibility, and of course, Nicole did too. You know, what we are proud of is how can we enhance things amongst the resources that we already have, right? So we're proud that we were able to offer an additional conditional area this year for TVHS and Margarita Middle School, where we're not adding any routes, but within our resources, we're expanding the opportunities for students to utilize transportation. And then culture and climate comes to mind as Dr. Price is sitting in front of me. One great thing we did this year, and I'll give the kudos to him, you know, Walk of Gratitude is something we do throughout the year, and transportation supports, has supported that effort, you know, back when Jason was running the department and beyond. But, you know, we have students at Rancho Vista who don't necessarily, or haven't necessarily until this year, thanks to Dr. Price, had that opportunity, right? So we had an event where our Rancho Vista students hosted at TES, had their own, for the first time ever, Walk of Gratitude. And just showing up with Dr. Price and watching those kids walk through a school where they normally hadn't had that opportunity, it was, it was a very life-changing moment, right? And I'll share that, just by coincidence, the bus driver who happened to be assigned to that field trip, there's a long, complicated process is how bus drivers are assigned, her daughter went to Rancho Vista. So for her, the experience, she stood up and gave a speech and was so thankful to the, for the opportunity and kind of spoke about her experience to those kids. And I think it's one of those events that will continue for years to come that has great impact on our students.
Thank you, Lee. And I've heard you say that in many cases for students, the bus driver is the very first school employee they see in the morning, and it's the last school employee they see as they go home. So if that bus driver sets a great day for that kid, it permeates the entire day. If it's a bad experience, then we have to pick up the pieces going along. So thank you. Brad, did you want to say something about nutritional services? You would think, oh, nutritional services, they're kind of, they do their own thing.
And we really do our own thing. Something we are excited to share about our program is we're a completely self-supporting program. So that means that any resources that we bring in, we support our program. We have our own fund that supports student meals that are fabulous. We are able to provide kids with meals that we're proud to serve. I have an incredible staff out there that puts their heart and soul into those meals. We serve approximately 20,000 meals a day. That's over three and a half million meals per year. The ladies out there at the sites, like I said, are seeing those kids, making contact with them, feeding them... with them, feeding them. Because if a student comes to school and is hungry, or is at school during the day and is hungry, that often means the kid maybe is going to go to the nurse and they're going to have behavioral problems and there's going to be all sorts of things that come out of hunger. And we can address that hunger because kids like to eat our meals. There's lots of stories out there that I've heard and it's wonderful to hear how our staff is impacting the kids on a daily basis and really providing that basic need. But we're doing it in a way that we're proud of. We're serving local farmed produce. We're serving organic foods. We're serving cultural menus, all sorts of exciting things that we can do for kids on a daily basis.
Very good. Mr. Evans, did I miss you on one of your comments?
I just had a quick comment on five with positive climate and culture. I know that in my prior position with Mrs. Mueller, we focused on really how our employees and students feel. So ultimately, we look for opportunities to recognize them in newsletters, whether it's a HI5 program. I think that when you're going to have a successful organization, you have to have an employee group that wants to come to work every day. And I think that we are very intentional in making sure that people feel appreciated through actions and also things that we can showcase them, whether it's in social media posts or whether it's in our newsletter. So I think that that's a big piece of our organization.
Mr. Barham or Dr. Kamroski, I want to give you the last shot because we need to move on to the important slide. Anything you want to say about gears and about making sure that everything's flowing nicely and we're considering all avenues of this district before we move on? You don't have to, you can pass.
Assistant Directors, Coordinators, Principals, thank you for making the gears work.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Barham, anything?
I just wanted to say that collaboration is so important. And I think, based on my experience here in the last seven months, we do it very well. And I think the results, and I don't know if they're going to be spoken of in any way tonight because we can't really talk specifically, but we are doing very well. And I'm very proud of the work that we have all done together in the last seven months collaboratively. So, thank you.
Very good, thank you for that. Let's go on to the next slide. This one's the most important slide of the presentation. It's symbolic. The committee, Dr. Kamroski, Mr. Barham, myself, started to cook up some ideas just out of thin air. We wanted to tell a story. We wanted to be able to take a slide like this, and I literally could talk for an hour on this. You don't want to hear me talk for an hour on this, but I could. You don't. There is so much in here, it's unbelievable when you start ripping it apart. We're going to do a little bit of that. I want you to look at it. There's some language up there, symbols, even colors maybe. What do some of you see before I say much? What do you want to point out? You can almost make up any symbol you want and you're probably going to be right. What do you see? Go ahead, Dr. Velez.
One thing that I see when it comes to this, in terms of that roadmap getting to future leaders, that it's not only applicable to the students in our district, but it's applicable to our staff in our district. So so many of these pieces along that path are not only valuable to get to a future leader just for students, but it's for staff as well, because we have so many things in place to get us there.
That's the first thing Dr. Kamroski said. He pointed out future leaders, which came from the exercise a year and a half ago. And we decided to put that at the top of this document because ultimately, that's where we want to get. You're right. What else do you see? Go ahead, Lisa Brown.
So I noticed the stakeholder groups that are in the balloon, right?
Oh.
And we all play a role in one or more of those stakeholder groups because one person might represent several stakeholders, different groups. But we're all traveling along this path and we all have a shared responsibility in meeting the culture of success or bringing to fruition what a future leader might look like. So whether you're a parent or an educator or a community member, or you fit multiple descriptions, like you might be an educator and a parent in the district, you have a shared responsibility in helping navigate that pathway.
Excellent. She's right. We had a couple of kids' heads in here at one point. It's come out for a little while because it's just, we can't proportionally get it to look right. But someday, it might go back in there. But the intent is, yeah, there are kids in the basket. It's all about them, they're in that basket, and you know, obviously, we're trying to move them up. Look at the balloon a little bit. Let's get a little creative in here. We got, I would call them panels. Can you see the panels? And the panels actually, you know, have big, huge stakeholder groups attached to them. Students and families, community, board, support staff, educators. Who can be creative about the panels? Think about outside and inside. What are they made of? Hard material or soft material? Heavy material or light material? How are they put together? Inside the panels, how do you put it together? Jess, I can tell I have you perplexed right now. What do you think? Take a, take a reach. How do you put those panels together on the inside? What do you got to do?
I think you have to look at the individual members of, which each, that each group represents in terms of, I think if we're looking at, as Lisa said, we have different, we all wear different hats within that balloon. Some of us are staff members here, but some of us are also family members. And, you know, many of us live here in the community. And so I think if we're looking at how we're creating that, how we're looking at that balloon, I think we all play different roles, but we all have input from our various backgrounds.
Very good. Go ahead, Jason.
I just think when I look at it, not one panel can do the lifting. Not one panel can move it. So all the panels have to work together. They have to be stitched together and working together.
Stitched together. Usually with nylon and nylon. Jason, what happens if the stitching isn't right and there's some little holes in there? What happens with all that hot air?
Just like me talking, it goes out.
It goes out. Yeah. Yeah, people, when I, when I show this to groups, they, we all try to debate who's the hot air. You know, a lot of times, it's me. But yeah, that hot air in there, the intent is to raise that thing up. It's got to be perfect. You can't have a little hole anywhere. So Natalie, I think, I look at you and it's, in terms of the stitching symbolism, in terms of what you do for the district, where do you think some of that magic really is?
Well, first of all, it's all about our students, right? And so the stitching has to be extremely tight in order for us to get up in the air. Any holes that we have is, we need to depend on each other, all the community, the stakeholders, to depend on each other to get that hole back tight because we're all a team, is kind of how I look. Serving the special populations, that's where we're going to have to use our innovation and really think outside the box, outside the balloon a little bit to see, to get us to our future leader because it's changing every day, right? And it's much different than when I went to school, when you went to school, what the expectation of future leader is.
Yeah, and you almost have to have everything up here. You can't have a community that's not supporting the school district. You can't have families that are angry with the school district and feeling as if our transportation's falling apart and our schools aren't well-kept, our teachers aren't doing their job. You, every single group up here has to be supportive. It literally takes all of us, no doubt about it. Mr. Schwartz, I've heard you say this word a number of times in your comments. Responsibility.
I want to talk about achievement, I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead, you, you go ahead.
Because we could, we could talk about test scores. We could talk about touchdowns. We could talk about soccer goals. We could talk about emotional growth. We could talk about a kid who didn't speak English when he got here and now is fluent in English and is in regular classes. We could talk about our special ed population and their progress from where they are to moving on. And achievement, I mean emotional achievement and just, do you come to school, are you happy? If you're happy when you come to school, we've done something good to make you happy, whether it was the bus driver or the breakfast or the lunch. There's some reason that you're here that's making you want to be here. And that lays the ground for you to be successful and achieve. Responsibility, we're all responsible. Everyone has a piece of the action, whether it's the budget, whether it's custodian. You know, one of the amazing things when I visit schools is the relationship that our students have with our custodial staff.
Wonderful.
It's not like they're just, you know, there to do it. They like them, they support them, they go up and, and talk with them. And it's another person, every, I remember when I taught, I believed every child had to have some hook in school, whether it was art or music or dance or whatever. And if, the only thing that gets that child into school is because they get a smile from their custodian, well, that's worth it. And that's part of the responsibility every part of us, every one of us has in making it successful.
Thank you. There are other words up here. I know some of you in the audience, if a word stands out to you, Anna, let me know what it is.
Can I do the last?
Go for it.
Hi, good evening, everyone. When I look at the balloon and I look at the makeup of it, it kind of ties back to the previous two slides in my mind. So I see the board as the outside of that balloon. And I come from a family of quilters. And together collaboratively, you have to come up with a plan of what that quilt is going to look like, what the story is going to be told, how people are going to work together in order to get to the final outcome and how that story is going to be shared. So when I see the board as that outside panel, I almost see it as the, the outline of where it is that we're trying to go and what the sandbox is to allow us as a district to do everything we can to ensure high-quality teaching and learning for all. And that's why I see the students and the educators kind of in the middle, if you will. And I look at that framework as the first slide with the leadership and the care and the fiscal responsibility like Mrs. Lash talked about and other things that were mentioned there. But then I go back to the gears again, because I heard you earlier say that the hot air balloon, everything has to work perfectly in order for it to elevate in the air. Personally, I'll probably never experience that because that might be a fear that I have. However, I'm going to trust that notion. And it's got to work perfectly in order for it to go up in the air, just like all those systems have to work perfectly that we mentioned a moment ago. And those systems work for the purpose of the child. And all we're doing to support the child and their families through the educational system that we see with everybody listed up there and the board offering the framework from what those priorities are.
Outstanding. Very good. Anyone else? See a word up here, Mike, Joe, either one?
I've got a word.
Ms. Weirzma?
Yes.
Go ahead, let Ms. Weirzma go and then we'll go over here.
So the one thing that I see in this that we can't see that's really interesting is when I look at this balloon, we know it's got to have a fire that burns to take it up. And what comes to me is thinking about the fact that we as leaders have to have integrity, we have to speak truth, we've got to know that we do amazing things and that we have stuff that needs to be purified by the fire. And there needs to be honesty in that process. And I think when we look at this balloon rising, look at all the people surrounding it. It's not just a board, it's not just students, it's the whole group, and yet it's the fire that burns. We have got to ignite together, recognizing the positive and the thing that we can do to get better, because otherwise, it's going to collapse and it's all of those people that lose out. So the way I see it is if we can dig deep and figure out how to make that fire bigger and better versus dampening it, I think that's going to be key. And there's going to be an ebb and flow. It's going to go up and it's going to come down a little bit and it's going to rise up. And it's the consistency of realizing we're all here for a purpose and a reason, whether we're a teacher, whether we're a bus driver, whether a superintendent, a board member. I think there's that humility in realizing, if we can figure out how to light the fire and be honest, that is where we win.
Good analogy. Mike or Joe?
Yeah, you know, and actually, I love Mrs. Weirzma's fire analogy. When I look at this from the human resources lens and also from the compliance lens, the thing that stands out to me is the balloon can't get in the air without the safety and responsibility piece first. And where that starts with is our thousands of amazing staff who do have a fire that burns within them to make our kids happy and successful and want to achieve. So our staff really is that first place for safety and responsibility. And the thinking about it from the compliance lens, you know, oftentimes, compliance is thought of as a reactive thing. If something goes wrong, then what are the steps we're going to do to correct that? Truthfully, if compliance is done well, what we're doing is we're creating a safe environment, we're taking that responsibility very seriously, and we're creating that positive culture for our kids so that they can take off in all those places. So what's, what stands out to me is the staff that we have that really take the lead with, with all of these pieces, starting with safety and responsibility.
Very good. Joe?
Similar to what Mr. Marble said there, I can't get past the wicker basket. And the fact that this is a massive balloon, you know, we see these hot air balloons and if you live close to wine country or in Crown Hill, sometimes, you know, once they get up, it's, sometimes they're hard to control. And so we have to be very intentional in what we're doing. We're a people business, kids at the heart of what we do, staff at the heart of what we do. And so we have to be so intentional, just because we get up into the air, we have to be intentional about which direction we're going. And I love what Ms. Weirzma said about safety and that fire. It is so important that we get, we get up in the air, but we remember, we have to keep kids at the forefront of what we're doing and we have to be honest and intentional in that approach.
Gosh, that's awesome. That's very well said. Joe in the back? Is there another Joe in the back? That's a lot of Joes in one room.
There's an up need back there, but not a Joe.
Briefly, one of the things that I'm always so impressed with and inspired by in our school district from the time that I've been here is our intentionality behind not working in silos. And so I don't want to mix your metaphors, but going back to what you had said, what you were, Dr. Woods, what you were pulling out of us in terms of the panels of the balloon, I think about the fact that the nylon, the material, the basket, the fire, the gears, all of that, the stitching, all of that separate does not elevate the balloon. And it does not elevate our students, it does not create future leaders. It doesn't matter how talented each department, division, group that's on the graphic up there are, if they're not working together. And so one of the things I wanted to underscore that I really appreciate about this particular graphic and the metaphor is, all of it is relatively useless in terms of getting us to our goal of elevating and creating, elevating our students and creating future leaders and serving our community if we don't stitch the panels together, get the fire in the right place, make sure everybody's in the basket, the basket's attached to the panel, or in other words, if we're not working together. And so I just wanted to underscore the fact that I think it's super important that we continue to put systems in place that keep us talking about the right things.
See, I told you we could talk about this for an hour. Easy. But in the interest of time, I want to give our two committee members the last say on this one. And we have one more back here, got it? Okay, hold on. Go ahead, go ahead, Abne.
Yeah, I'm going to be brief and I think I want to reiterate what you already said, like collaboration and like, you know, the staff being present to address any concerns. I moved in very recently, the first time I went into and met Mr. Morton during a meeting, he exactly knew who my child was and he had met her and he was able to talk about it. And we're talking about a hot air balloon. If you've been up in one, there's basically fire on top of your head. And it's loud and noisy and wind can change direction anytime. The other thing I want to say is, we're seeing very good results also because of that, is adaptability. As soon as something like is not working, changing direction quickly is also very important, which I've noticed, like, you know, our school was pretty good at, like fail fast. If it's not working, just switch and move on to better things.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Either one, committee members?
I wanted, Dr. Woods, if you would comment on this or maybe ask the staff, when we first started this, we were talking about concrete, quantifiable, and measurable goals, which throughout the district, the superintendent is normally evaluated with those kinds of goals, but not so much the rest of the staff. And at first, it was kind of like, we're going to be evaluated concretely and quantifiably. But then the conversation started to change. Could you talk about that and maybe with the rest of the staff?
I mean, I might hit some of it when we talk about the tool itself for a performance evaluation. I'm just theoretically.
I guess what I wanted to say. I guess what I wanted to say was that the numbers that we're going to be looking at when we look at quantifiable, concrete goals in terms of accountability, they're there to stimulate conversation.
That's right.
They're, they're to be, we're there to use those numbers to figure out the whys as to why things are happening.
That, that is the theory behind that, yes, the numbers only lead to a conversation.
Correct.
Goals, same thing. You create goals based on what you're analyzing, those lead to conversations, hopefully continual conversations, and hopefully there are milestones that are built in. Because, I'll give you an example. If I said to myself, I want to lose 20 pounds in two months, most of you'd say, Dr. Woods, that's probably a good idea. I agree with you. But if I say I want to lose 20 pounds in two months, and I leave it at that, how successful do you think I'm going to be? You have to take 60 days in those two months and create some meaningful little game that you play with yourself, because we're social beings, on getting to that point. For example, let's say I wanted to cut sodas out of my diet. So I say to myself, for five days in a row, I'm not going to have a soda, and on the sixth day, I'm going to treat myself to a root beer float. Okay, well, I might be able to accomplish that goal, and then I have a bunch of others that go along with that. So it's the same thing with goals in an evaluation. You got to be careful that those goals are not just like these giant things stated way in the future. You got to have milestones. The board has to be able to talk about this maybe three, four times a year. It can't just be one and done. That just doesn't work with human beings.
Absolutely.
So I hope I got to the point you were mentioning. Dr. Kamroski, anything you want to finish this off?
I was going to speak today to Driven, but I'll wait for the other slide. I wanted to touch on innovation, because, and I'll relate that to the students' part. When I started the, the ASB tours for middle school and high school, and we created that, what blew me away is just watching the students' leadership from their perspective, peer-to-peer, leading each other. Like, hey, just in case we have introverts, we have these activities for them. And I saw so many different wonderful leadership styles, and, and, and the innovation coming out of it. And look at the finest example of that, we have Melissa sitting with us, right there. You get innovation from the students, and they push her to the top and say, we want you to represent our voices. So that was one of the biggest gems I've ever had, being a school board member, is just saying, where do you, what do you want me to see? Where do you want to take me? And it was just awesome. Can't really describe it all here, but...
I agree with you. Melissa, we'll let you finish it off.
I really appreciate that some students are, obviously, like, students are in the basket, but they're also making a part of that balloon. And I like that that emphasizes how important it is for students to also be a part of their own journey, to rise, to be future leaders. It's like you can lead a horse to water, but you can't force it to drink, right? So as students, we can't only rely on the community around us to make us successful, to elevate us to that status, we also have to put in that work ourselves. And that was just something I noticed. I didn't, I didn't think we'd be talking about the balloon for so long, but I did appreciate that discussion.
It's amazing, thank you. Let's go to the next...
Gary, I just got a point, just, we didn't have kids in that balloon, I'm pretty sure, because safety was right next to it. We all laughed about just keeping it real.
We couldn't, yeah. They looked like they were hanging out, but yeah, we took them out for a little while. Okay, this is a really important slide, because it tells a story. We, we talked about how the board started this process a year and a half ago. As a result of that document, our team started to really focus in on our students, our staff, and our site administration. So we looked specifically at the schools, 29 of them, and we asked ourselves, what can we do better with the 29? We started talking about, well, let's be strategic. We can't do everything, let's do something, and let's do it in a focused way, and let's monitor and give ourselves milestones, and talk about it several times this year. So last June, we started strategic plans. Every principal came in front of six, seven, eight of us, it always would change, depending on who was available. And the principal would stand in front of this group with their slide deck behind them, and they talked about very specific goals that they had at each site. They were so specific that on occasion, they would go to an individual student. You would talk, you would see a picture of an individual student, and they would tell you the progress of that student, or what that student was working on, or what kinds of resources we were providing that student because they were having difficulty. That's pretty darn specific in a district of 27, 28,000 kids. So we did that in June, we did it again in January, and then we did it this June. So this June was the third time we did this, and it was amazing what happened. Mr. Barham and Dr. Kamroski had a chance to watch a couple of these, so before I ruin it, what were your impressions, your reflections?
Well, if it would have been me, I, I would have been scared. I mean, it's, it's a little scary to present to eight directors and assistant superintendents. They had to come very prepared, and they did. But they are basically talking about their results, their past results, what their future goals are, talking about, you know, even talking about individual student stories and the progress that they've made with those individual students. But it, the whole process just promotes accountability when the person who's actually given the presentation speaks it to their superiors. And, you know, there was a lot of back and forth at the end, in, in terms of the feedback to these principals, but it's, it's changed the game. It's a game changer. And I think that as a result of those strategic meetings with those principals, it has, it's, it's culminated in the student achievement that we're going to see here when we're able to release it to the public, because I know that that, those results are great. So I'm, I'm just hoping that as we continue to have these strategic meetings this year, that we're just going to keep moving ahead, because we're winning as a result.
Before I forget to say it, so our site visits then started to get linked to their strategic plans. So when any of us walked on a site, we warned the principals, we're going to ask you about your strategic plan. And we did. And they could answer it like that. It was amazing. Dr. Kamroski?
Yeah, I was very impressed, as it was very challenging. I'll use the word from Amy Ricken, we saw 29, oh, sorry, I saw probably seven to nine, I can't remember the exact numbers, but there's 29 mini cities where somebody's coming in and giving, I'll use the management analogy, the SWOT, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats, even though that wasn't, you know, what they did explicitly, that's what they were doing. They were trying to show us, this is where I think we're doing good last year, this is where I think we can improve. They were doing showcasing of students, you know, and it was like teary, some of it, on some of the success these students had. And I think that was a Herculean task on your part, but I emphasize your leadership to pull all that together. And they would go, I just want to give a few examples. Chronic absenteeism, of course, the CASP wars with math and English, Algebra I and II, safety, culture and belonging, and each principal framed things differently and emphasized different things. One principal said, I need Ukrainian and Russian translators. Like, oh, and then another one, I need funding for reading specialists, math specialists, that would eventually tie to Mrs. Lash, how do we fund for that? So you could see all these gears now starting to work together, and that, that was impressive to me. And, you know, another one was tier three kids. It was overwhelming for me, seeing all this, trying to put it all together, but this is real accountability. I ran on administrative accountability when I first campaigned, this is much bigger than that. This is accountability all district-wide, for the teachers, up to the site leadership, from the assistant directors to the directors, to the assistant superintendents to you. So all this aggregate data flows to you, which I know you're excited about, your evaluation. So we tag it all to you.
This is that balloon, balloon gaining altitude. And it is exciting, we all get excited too, trust me. When we see a principal knock it out of the park, oh, man, we're all smiling. We call it, it's 30-minute presentation, we call it 30 minutes of terror. And it really is, it's hard, but they're getting used to it now, which is part of the mission here, so that's great. Dr. Velez, you have a huge part in this, so...
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Woods. So I am actually so happy that you guys were able to sit in and see some of our incredible principals coming in to present. And I think one of the things that's really important, I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. And first is, it's looking at their data, and it's looking at their data, not only the CASP data that happens once a year, but it's looking at the individual data for each individual, each individual student to figure out, not only how am I going to move this group of students, but how am I going to move this one student? And the student stories that we heard were just absolutely incredible. So so much of the strategic plans are really rooted in how are you going to move individual, individual students? And really, the idea of that came out of looking at some of our special populations that traditionally were not moving. But we realized very quickly as an ed services department, that the high-leverage, research-based, instructional practices that are embedded within the strategic plans are not just going to move special, the special populations, it's going to move all kids. And that's one of the things that we really found. I would like to emphasize a piece from the earlier slide about kind of those data-driven decisions. When Dr. Woods talked about the midway point where they had to come in and present, where are you on your strategic plan? That's also an opportunity, opportunity for all of our site administrators, administrators with their instructional leadership teams to make some pivots in their plan. If they found that some of the strategies that they had were not working, that gives you an opportunity to go back. I don't want you to continue that all year. I want you to go back, and I want you to reflect, and I want you to kind of come up with new goals. And so it was an opportunity for them to really have the reflection piece, that it is working and it isn't working. Not only, as Dr. Woods talked about, what, when you're on your site visits with board members, are you talking about strategic plans? But as the directors, as part of their site support, and they're meeting with principals sometimes once a month, or twice a month, or sometimes three times a month, they're talking about their strategic plan. Show me what's happening, let's sit down and let's have a really in-depth conversation about those instructional practices. So that accountability level comes with a huge level of support by all of these wonderful directors that are sitting behind me, not only in ed services, but with every department. And just let me use the example real quick. I know that Mr. Osborne was talking about the installation of whiteboards. And whiteboards have been a really important piece of the math, the new math framework that's happening in ed services. And so for us to be able to move that forward, which is embedded in strategic plan, it took the purchasing department to purchase them, and it took Mr. Osborne to be able to install them. Those are kind of the gears that we think about in order for them to just accomplish their strategic plan that happens on their campus. And I think Dr. Woods is right, there's, the level of concern kind of notched up just a little bit. But I also, at the end of the year, got to saw, got to see principals come in and celebrate kids, and celebrate their staff, and celebrate themselves, because what we asked them to do was not easy, it was a heavy lift. And actually, Dr. Woods and I, along with a lot of the assistant supes and directors, went out and celebrated every single school site, and celebrated what they did and the accomplishments, and we took cookies. I mean, who doesn't love cookies? They were happy about that. So we were able to celebrate what they did, because again, accountability comes with a huge level of support.
Let me jump on that one. That means that a small group of us would go to every single site, all 29, go to their faculty meeting, stand in front of the faculty, and tell them, we know this was a heavy lift, you guys did a great job. In fact, we would bring some very specific data and tell them where they made great growth, and tell them, thank you, because it was them that did it. And they deserve the credit at those sites in those classrooms. Thank you, that's beautiful. So these three are going. Most districts do this in the exact opposite. They start down here, and then, you know, it gets filtered. It's a very top-down approach. No, we started where it matters, in those classrooms. We got these three guys going here, and they're, they're knocking it out of the park. That system's in place. Whether any of us are around at this point, that thing's going to keep, keep going, I can promise you. So what the committee had to do, once we figured out, we got this dialed in, we had to start thinking about this part right here, which is where most districts start. How can we align? How can we get the gears working on our level? How can we hold ourselves accountable? What tools are we going to use? Are we going to do little presentations in front of other groups? You know, how can we get these four groups moving in the same direction to support that great work up there? That was really our task. That was, we realized, okay, that's our mission. Okay, it makes sense. It took us a few months to get there, but once we understood this part, then it became quite easy. We actually started right here, I, I consider this our directors, the directors, raise your hand if you, you know how we did things in big cabinet, we call it. Right? So we changed big cabinet, the way it used to be done. So what it became was individual groups of directors coming in and sharing with a group of 40, 45 people what their department was doing to support this effort. And Brad, I remember that nutrition report you gave, I thought, wow. Because I was, I watched you go up there, and I thought, oh, gosh, how was he going to describe this? And you flat-out knocked it out of the park. You proved numerically, quantitatively, qualitatively, how your department impacts student achievement. And the research supports you 100%. So I know you did your homework, but that was fascinating. Jason, same thing. Lee, of course, same thing. You guys blew us out of the water. Obviously, instructional services can handle themselves, Dr. Velez has them going like, you know, like crazy. They come in, knock it out of the park every time, but this is their wheelhouse. So I was really proud of you guys for doing that. So now the conversation moves into this area. Two, our committee members, if you want to say something.
Just real quick, too, if, if, just for the outside audience that's viewing this online, and members of the public, and even three of the board members that weren't involved, some of this seems, oh, this is, it looks heavily bureaucratic. It'll get more practical. On the previous slide, when we had data-driven practices, you will see our big four, we started off with 10, we consolidated into four, you'll see that on Dr. Woods' evaluation on this next action item, you'll actually see data scores. So it's very tangible. So just wait, I don't want to jump too far ahead.
Very good. Let's go ahead and jump. All right, so now let's talk about a tool, one of the tools that we use. It's really the only one I feel comfortable talking to you about, because it's about a superintendent. The superintendent is the only person that the board really evaluates, by law. Everything else falls under the guise of the superintendent. Obviously, you got to have this thing figured out. It's got to align, it's got to be part of the overall system, it has to be continual, you have to have milestones, you got to look at the research. I've seen a lot of superintendent evaluations over the years. I went to an organization that's done this for over 10 years across the United States, and picked out the things that they were looking at in terms of a research model. These are the components that are critical, and that the board should obviously consider. The superintendent's relationship with the board, there's a whole series of questions in there, statements, and what they're going to have to do is put a number, basically from zero to four. So it's a Rubrik-style evaluation, they're, they're putting numerical numbers next to every category. They have choices, the language that they think is most accurate represents the number. They do it anonymously, the board president usually hands them a document, they do it anonymously, it comes back to the board president, the board president summarizes all of it, meets with me individually, shares the document with me, but then we have to go back to work, because now, based on that part of the evaluation, we have to develop the goals, very specific goals, those are very important. So these are the categories, relationship with the board, relationship with the community, relationship with staff members, business and finance, educational leadership. And as Dr. Kamroski pointed out, and Mr. Barham, I'm sure will talk, we came up with this kind of unique concept called the big four. It started with 10, very, very big goals. These are very large goals, large goals about math, about English language arts, about attendance rates, and about a sense of belonging or safety in terms of the kids. So then you have to take, this was the hardest one, you got to, you got to have metrics in the district that you measure based on... You've got to, you've got to have metrics in the district that you measure based on the big four. And same kind of thing, you have to lay the metrics out in a Rubrik-style format and kind of get a sense of where we are. You have to provide the board data. Some of this is really hard to provide the board data. For example, the English Language Arts School, the data is embargoed by the state of California for a while. Lisa, when will it maybe come out? Yeah, you know, late September, October. They're not going to see the real numbers, but, because they're always being updated and they want to hold off until they know the numbers are exact. But what I can do confidentially with them is share maybe some preliminary numbers. So at least they have an idea. But even those numbers are so big, like, let's say, 65% of the kids were at grade level or above in this one category last year, and now 67% are above. The question is, what does that mean? You can't just stop there. You have to use this fancy term called disag is the result of a 2% increase. I then work with directors. We look at it, we crunch the numbers, we know what the sites are doing, we know what the strategic plans are about, and then we start to provide the board with detailed information. Hey, this 2% is probably a result of whatever. Then possibly the board might want to take that area and make a very specific goal out of it. Maybe they want to say, Gary, take that English Language Arts goal and focus this next year on our six middle schools. Like, I'm going to have to ask them to narrow it down a bit. Or it could be these five elementary schools, you know, whatever it is. But we got to, we got to get this thing disaggregated down to a point where it's meaningful. And then, as I think Mr. Barham said, what's most important about all of this is the fact that we talk and have conversations. That's it. That's the value of an evaluation. It's a document that allows you to have a conversation. If things aren't going well and we're 6% off in an area, if I were the board, I'd want to know why. And we want to know why. We probably already know why. But I'm going to be using staff and their expertise to help talk with the board about why we've fallen off. We might want to break it down in categories. There's lots of categories we can break it down. Lisa is phenomenal. All we do is put Lisa on this thing and she'll give you, she'll give you more data than you want to ever see. But you've got to turn that data into a conversation. So some people misunderstand, really, the purpose of an evaluation. If it's done right, it's meaningful. If it's not meaningful, it's worthless. It has to be meaningful to the board and to me and to our staff, our team. If we can find that, and I'm going to push for that, because I've seen some that are just, just not meaningful. They're not connected to anything. It's terrible. They're totally in isolation. It's a waste of time. I don't want this to be a waste of time. We owe the, we owe the community, the district more than that. So let's do this right. Let's take the time. Let's have our meetings set up. They're usually enclosed. They are, they are, timeout. Okay, there we go. Thank you. So, the point being, I think we're doing this right. I think we had this set up to be valuable. And I do believe it helps support the gears that are already going. The last thing I want to do is mess up the gears with my situation. Let's get the gears working, let's get it in alignment with everybody else, let's have this meaningful. I might, it's not always done this way, but I might share out some of the things that we're doing in my evaluation. It's not me, it's my position. Because I think that's meaningful to the, to the community. And I might do that. A lot of superintendents keep it very quiet and they just deal in closed session. Well, I'm not that way. Because I have to do a great job as I expect everyone else to do it. So how can I do that unless I can feel comfortable sharing some things out that we're working on at the board level? Now that is unique. That will be different for Temecula. Questions, comments?
Just a quick comment. I remember when I would... Go ahead. I remember when I was teaching and test scores came out. That's hard data.
Yeah.
But that's only part of what we're talking about. So when we, if we had a kid who was in a, say, in the third grade, who was barely reading and is now reading at second grade level, that's not going to show on a test, but that's going to show as progress. And so it's not just hard data, it's progress. And progress in all different kinds of areas, whether it's kids who are now, who are behavior problems, who are not behavior problems anymore. Students who were, now their English ability has moved up, so they're now in a regular class. We don't expect that kid to be on grade level. So the hard data and the expectations have to blend together. It's not just numbers. We're talking about people. We're talking about people like Melissa. We're talking about students. We're talking about how they feel. Are they coming to school? Are they happy? Are they learning? And it's hard to aggregate some of those things and put your finger on them, but those are the things that are really important when we're talking about success.
Very nice. Anybody else here or out here, please? Amy?
I think one of the really exciting things that Dr. Woods has done from my time a year ago when I left as a high school principal was start really giving our students a voice. And I think there's more recognition in our students about who our superintendent is and what his mission and vision and how he supports that execution of that in our community. The superintendent's council, where you give students access to you FaceTime, they have an opportunity to ask questions. You're so frank and transparent in answering those questions. And in 25 years of living in this community, working as a teacher and administrator in this community, I've heard our students speak more confidently about how our district operates and works, but also feeling like, when they talk, someone's listening and valuing their feedback. So that's huge kudos.
And we have an additional person who will be joining us and actually leading that, which will be our dear Melissa over here. So she'll be helping me with the student council, superintendent council, and I'm looking forward to that, having a student voice in a leadership role. That's awesome. Anyone else? Anyone else on the board?
Something you talked about before the meeting started, this is a process, it's not an end result. It's a template. And for the 100-foot view, for people out there thinking, this is a lot, what's going on here? Accountability. We've restructured and recalibrated and fine-tuned our systems of accountability. And then goals, we have four big ones. You'll see those trickling out. And then hopefully, you know, this gets put into place effectively. We vote this in, attach it to your evaluation, and we have a better culture of success, but it's still a process. For example, next year, we might add on science or drill down into third grade reading comprehension. Who knows? Either way, we have the template now.
You are right. We have to be willing to edit it along the way. We're not perfect. We didn't figure it out everything right off the bat. It has to evolve and we have to be able to say, it's okay to do that.
And this is baby steps. It's baby steps.
We've got to start somewhere.
Well, normally a process like this, it's a 10-year process.
Oh, easy.
It's easy a 10-year process to really get it to where you really want to get it. It's 10 years. I mean, the way I've seen it in my career, so.
Yeah.
This is a good start. It's a great start.
That's why we put a 10-year date on the slide at the very beginning. People are like, what? You know, yeah, it's 10, it's a 10-year process and we've already started, so we're like one solid year in. Anyone else, before we move on to the final slide? Yes?
At the beginning of last school year, Dr. Woods kicked us off with an idea from Steve Jobs. And you shared with the leadership team that best idea wins. And I think that we can't create the space for the best idea winning without all of these things up here that you model for your leadership team, for your staff, and for your students every day. And so I think under that notion of best idea wins, we have really moved the needle for our students and our teachers and our leaders at the sites, because they know that they have a voice at the table. And I think that's kind of going off of what Amy Ricken has shared. You've given a lot of people a voice at the table and you've created a safe environment to share all of our ideas so that we're truly doing what's best for students.
And so the question always is, why? Why? Why do that? Because it makes us better. It makes each one of us perform at our very best. And in leadership, next week, I will introduce happiness as a competitive advantage. Happiness as a competitive advantage. And I'll show you the research. I believe in it. I've seen it happen before and it's going to happen here. And we're going to pay attention to that intentionally. Technically, this group is incredibly sound. Technically, they're above the pale. Honestly, I've been around a lot of leadership teams. These guys technically are extremely sound. I could spend all my time talking about technical stuff and it probably won't make a difference. But to me, one thing we can pay attention to is happiness among our teachers, our staff, our students, our parents. We all do better when we're happy. Because when we're happy, we're saying we feel comfortable. We feel like we belong. We feel like people respect us. And I'll tell you what, I'm going to give you my best. When I'm happy, I'll give you my best. If I'm grumpy and I'm not real happy where I'm at, I don't normally give you my best. And that goes really well, Amy, right for athletes. You and I, in our college experiences, those happy, content athletes give you everything they got and they'll leave it all on the field or all on the court. And the research is there in organizations like schools for the very same thing to happen. So technically, I can't offer a lot because you're so great, but maybe we can talk about happiness. And I think it's going to result in some growth here in terms of our goals. Okay, last slide. And I will be finishing right where I wanted. Being raised by a Marine lieutenant, time is everything to me. We're going to finish early, perhaps. Any other comments, questions, thoughts? There are a lot of people watching online, so they'll hear you. Any final thoughts as we wrap this up? As a teacher, I know I've done my job. And there's no more questions, so don't beat it to death. But I'll make one more comment. We have a great opportunity in this district. I saw it when I came here. I saw it very quickly. Do we have our challenges? Yes. Show me a district that doesn't. We have challenges, big ones. Sometimes you see them in public. But don't mistake yourself. We're here to get better. Everyone up here wants to be better. I know that. I know that of them. We may disagree on how to get there. That's a different issue. We're working on it. You've got to be patient. Give us some grace. Give us some time. We do have a plan and a slide that I can bring anywhere I go. And I'll say, I'll bet you we can talk about this for an hour. Do you believe me now? It's a great story. Very few districts have that. I see their strategic plans. In fact, our experts here looked at a lot of them. A ton of words, but very little action. You ask them, so how, well, how do you do that? Well, I don't know. We don't know yet. No, we did it the exact opposite. Not a lot of words, a great graphic that you can talk about forever, something very specific to our community, hot air balloons. We don't have hot air balloons in Long Beach where I live. They're here in Temecula. That's a wonderful symbol. It makes a lot of sense to me. You know, we have all of this, but it's going to take all of us to work as best we can together. If we disagree, I just would ask one favor. We've got to be respectful of each other. Oftentimes, you don't hear me up here. But I want respect, professionalism at all times. Because if we can't, we said that in our goals. We stated it up here. And I know, if we can achieve that, we're going to continue to make progress because the pieces are there, the plan is there, the philosophy is there. We've got a subcommittee that's following this and will continue to follow it. We've got a document now, if they approve it, that the board can use to hold me accountable, the superintendent. And then I keep working with our team as I have since I've come here, and we're going to continue to get better. But we've got to have the freedom to have the conversation. I have to feel happy and comfortable enough that I'm willing to tell them what I really think is wrong. Otherwise, I might hold back. I want to give them my all. That's the only reason I came here. You know the story. And I'm excited for what we can accomplish, but you've got, you have to be diligent and you have to have a plan. We have a plan now. We have one, thanks to their work, all of your work, you guys have been a part of it. We have a plan. We can talk about it for hours. And now we're executing it. And I'd love to hear compliments about the board and vice versa. I'd love to have the board compliment our team that works so hard. When I start hearing the compliments, I know we're going in the right direction. Does that make sense? Thank you for your time. It's been an honor to be here.
Great job, Dr. Woods. So we have three public comments relating to the action item before us. So we have three, right, Laney?
Yes, there was actually two for...
Information.
Yes, so we'll hear them all now.
It relates to the same thing. Okay, no worries. All right, so let's, let's call them up.
First one up is Chelsea. Oh, you know what? Pause, let me get the podium.
Good job, Gary.
Real good. Great job.
Good job, Dr. Woods.
Oh, it was, it's... Yeah, sorry, thank you, Ryan. How are schools and these people in here today expected to take accountability if there are a couple people on this board? Melinda and Emile? That it refused...
Point of order, ma'am. Ma'am?
If you cut me off, you are going to be violating my First Amendment right. This has everything to do...
Please stop, ma'am. You are not a parent in this district.
It doesn't matter, I'm a member.
You are not a community member, and I know this is planned by the young man who's filming...
No, it's not planned by him.
Please, ma'am, please.
You are silencing me, you're silencing... This is called viewpoint discrimination and, you know what, Dr. Woods? Let me tell you right now, that he is opening up your district right now to liability. He is breaking the law. It's called viewpoint discrimination.
Ma'am, point of order, ma'am. Ma'am, you are, you are, you are... You know what? You are traveling across the state terrorizing school boards, okay? If you want to stick, if you want to stick to accountability, stick to accountability, not to attacking board members, ma'am.
Everything in here is everything you spoke about.
Okay, if you can, if you... Chelsea Boyle, Chelsea, if you can, Chelsea, 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 Chelsea. Chelsea, if you would like to stick, if you would like to stick, this is a point of order. Chelsea, if... Chelsea, if you want to stick to accountability, you can move on, okay? Stick to accountability. Okay, so let's do that. Let's do that calmly, okay?
I'm not, I am calm.
Okay, all right, let's stick...
Breaking the law.
Go ahead and give her her full time.
Expected to take accountability and these people in this room, if a couple people on this board, Melinda and Emile, refuse to take accountability themselves. This district mission statement, we elevate experiences, opportunities, and each other. Were Emile and Melinda elevating other board members when they asked them to step down publicly?
Point of order.
Were they elevating?
Point of order, this does not relate...
Were they elevating them by cutting their mics during board comments?
Security, please have her sit down. Security, please have her sit down.
Were you elevating the public?
Please have her sit down.
Who are invested in their children's education by shutting up.
Please have her sit down.
During public comments? That is.
Please have her sit down. Please have her sit down.
Everything I'm saying.
Please have her sit down.
Oh, okay, so 1.2 million views on Libs TikTok, we're going to do a lot more.
Yeah.
Millions of views, we'll do a lot more, Emile.
Okay, next. Next, next, please.
Next up is Carolyn Thomas.
Next, please.
We could never lawsuit this district.
Okay, go ahead, ma'am, I'm sorry.
So I appreciate the opportunity to speak about the importance of accountability and how it connects from the leadership of Dr. Woods down to my classroom. And I do want to recognize Dr. Woods and all of this executive cabinet and directors who have consistently role modeled professionalism, civility, and preparation, even during some board meetings that have times been chaotic. That steady leadership matters to those of us observing, especially in a time of high expectations and limited resources. So as the board works to align Dr. Woods' evaluation with district outcomes, we must acknowledge a key point. Accountability does flow from the top down, like rain from the top of a mountain. Even though I respect that you started at the bottom and worked up, you do understand it does flow down. And although this proposed evaluation focuses on Dr. Woods, the superintendent, the weight of these goals lands squarely on teacher support staff and school sites. So if the school board expects Dr. Woods to be held accountable for quantitative improvement on test results from 100% digital AI graded assessment, then the school board members must provide the tools and infrastructure necessary to get there. This year, I had the opportunity to pilot targeted AI programs in my classroom as part of the District Technology Committee under the leadership of Chris Dixon and the mentoring of our instructional coaches. In 25 years of teaching in this district, I've never had students perform at the level they did this year. These tools weren't just digital worksheets. They offered immediate, specific feedback and supported critical thinking, creativity, and collaboration among my students. They were aligned directly to the skills our students need to succeed, especially on the rigorous constructed response portions of the CASP. So students are not allowed to use AI during the actual test because it does lock them out of it. But these programs being used all year long built their confidence, their skill level performance, and their anxiety was lower and their performance was higher. These results will help to support the school board's accountability targets for Dr. Woods. They demonstrate what's possible when we align our tools with our goals. So I was disappointed that some board members voted against continued use of these vetted tools without speaking to those of us who use them or understanding the classroom impact. That kind of top-down decision-making leaves out the people doing the actual work. On the other hand, I deeply appreciate the board members who did take the time to do a deep dive to review the tools, ask questions, and explore how they enhance student learning. If we truly want accountability, we need to ensure that those at the front lines of student achievement have the tools they need to deliver results. That is shared accountability.
And that means to share success. Thank you.
Okay.
Do you want me to ask the speaker to speak again?
Two, Chelsea?
No.
Carolyn? Yeah, go ahead.
Carolyn, you're the next speaker as well. Did you, was it, did that sum up both of them, or you want to speak again?
There was two agenda items.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
All right, for the other issue of shared accountability is the issue of combination classrooms and how they impact teacher working conditions, morale, and student success across TBSD. As you continue your discussion about aligning the superintendent's evaluation with district goals, it's important to recognize the ripple effect of every decision, especially those that directly impact the learning environment. With the recent rollout of new and more demanding curriculum, combo classes have become especially challenging. Teachers' and combo roles were stretched thin, and many site-level colleagues were asked to absorb the additional students from those classrooms without additional support, time, space, or compensation. Teachers, we want to be gracious teammates, so when someone asks us to take their kids, we'll do it, but that goodwill is being stretched. Teachers are getting more without receiving the resources they need to succeed, and that kind of imbalance is not sustainable. It also undermines our district-wide accountability goals for instructional effectiveness and student performance. I do want to thank Dr. Arce for graciously meeting with me and another teacher leader to review a compiled list of suggestions from a lot of elementary educators and site admin. The list wasn't meant to be a complete solution, but rather just a menu of reasonable options, measures that could lessen the strain and improve learning conditions for students and staff alike. We do recognize that eliminating combo classes may not be financially feasible right now, but if we're going to hold teachers, and you, Dr. Woods, to high standards, we must also support all of us with reasonable conditions. Combo classrooms affect more than just the assigned teacher. They impact the entire grade level team, the school community, and the parents' trust in our system. So as you as a school board hold leadership accountable, I ask you to also hold the system accountable for providing fair, functional learning environments. This fall, if you could, Dr. Woods, please inform your elementary staff about the steps which will be taken to avoid repeating those overwhelming conditions of last year. So again, shared accountability means shared support. Please don't leave teachers at the bottom of this mountain without a path to the summit. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Right now. You want to do it during the regular comments? I got you. We'll do it at the end because we have one.
Okay.
What I'm asking permission to do right now, which is totally feasible, is to speak to the agenda item as a citizen, as a Temeculaan, and as a mom. It is a perspective outside being a board member, and I think actually you'll find it interesting and something to bless the district with. So I'm asking for that opportunity as a citizen, and I believe I should be given that.
Okay, so from my standpoint, this is a little unprecedented, so I am going to ask for consensus from the board. So do I have consensus of the board?
No.
I think it's legally permissible, so I'll say yeah.
Okay. I'm going to say no. So we do not have consensus of the board for you as a board member to give a public comment.
Again, just to clarify, it's not me as a board member, it's me as a citizen.
Point of order, Mrs., point of order, Mrs. Wiersman, we're moving on. Okay, do we have any other public comments? Okay, so this meeting is adjourned to, no? Oh, we've got to do the action item, I'm sorry. Excuse me, I got you. Excuse me. Okay, so I move that the board approve the district accountability plan, the superintendent's evaluation document, and the board evaluation document to guide district priorities for the upcoming academic year. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Dr. Komrosky. Is there any discussion?
In terms of the.
Okay, yes.
Quick.
Oh, yeah, you can go.
No, go ahead. Okay, two minutes.
I was just going to say, in terms of the action item, maybe Dr. Woods can give a quick flyby on the big four on the data, you know, so that people can actually see.
You mean actually pull the document up?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, there's a lot, but just, just that section of the big four, and just let the audience know, this is the culmination of why we're here tonight. It's attaching this to reviewing you, but it's the entire information reports and now our big four being filtered through that template. You don't have to do a deep dive just so that they know, yeah.
This gives the board direction on how we're going to, how we're going to do this. So this is what this part is about. Go down. These are the areas, relations with the board, the community.
Oh, sorry.
Notice the rubric style. Staff members, finance. This language all comes from a national group over 10 years of experience. Oh, I'm sorry. Turn it.
Okay. So keep going down. This is educational leadership, keep going down. Okay, stop right here. All right, this is an example of the big four. This would be the most unique part of the evaluation. So this goal reads, "All students will demonstrate growth toward meeting academic standards in English language arts, and English learners will demonstrate progress in developing English language proficiency." At the moment, all I can give is 2024 in these metrics, but this is where you've got to do a deeper dive. You have to look at a category, you have to dig deep, you have to give disaggregated data, so the board then can really honestly understand what's going on. If, for example, let's take this one, we're at 61.9%, let's say we're over here at 65% this year. Well, that's interesting. That's a hard thing to, to grow that much, so we would go to work as a team trying to figure out, okay, what made the difference? You know, what was it? Was it new curriculum? Was it the strategic plans? You know, what was it that created that growth? Okay, keep going, so that's ELA. Then there's a, there's a math one. Come, come down. Number two. Number two, "All students will demonstrate growth toward meeting academic standards in math." That is so general, really no value whatsoever, but you've got, you've got to tease it out somehow. So you've got to start creating metrics. This is where the editing goes on. We might start adding different things. Lisa Brown's really good at, at looking at data, trying to give us stuff that we can look at from one year to the next. That's what we intend to do. Okay, number three. This is probably the, this is the chronic absenteeism one. This data is in here. It's something that we track, we can share most of it now. There's some changes here, but they're very, very slight, so you, you need to understand what, what's going on with attendance and, and how we're doing site by site, because some sites made tremendous growth. Some sites didn't. So we're going to want to compare, why did one group not make a lot of growth, but the other group did? And then have these best practices that we share with all of the schools, and then we really get to have a conversation. Okay, next, the fourth one. This is the most unique one. Joseph was one that was pushing really hard for this one. It's a sense of belonging, safety, connectiveness among students. We pulled this data from Panorama, so we do have some data. We survey parents, we survey students, and we survey teachers. So we're starting to compare for these two years, these areas that we're already doing surveys on. So the data exists, we can talk about it, we can crunch it, try to figure out what's happening here, because once again, in any of these areas here, there are some sites that made tremendous growth and some that didn't, once again. So I'm curious, you know, what, why? What happened there? Does that help, Joseph?
Yeah, oh, absolutely. That way it gives the 100-foot view, and, and now they can get some tangible, all right, this is why we're doing what we're doing.
Any other discussion here?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a remark. We're all stakeholders here, whether you're staff, teachers, admin, assistant superintendent, governing board member, community member. I think it's our job to shift the culture in, in terms of the tone of the conversation. In the last few years, especially post-COVID, we've heard these gripes, we have sucky math scores and English scores and all that kind of stuff. We could say, but did you hear what our district's doing? We're taking, we're taking a stand. Two board members rolled up our sleeves, worked for seven months, countless meetings. We're making a difference in our community. We have to shift the tone of the conversation, say, but did you hear what we're doing? And I just, I just give that as a word of encouragement to this whole culture of success for our entire community. I think it's our responsibility to do this. Shift the tone of the conversation and make it forward-thinking for them. Instead of, you know, complaining being a part of the problem, be a part of the solution. This is the solution, or it's a start to one.
Just real quickly, a lot of people don't get to work with our cabinet and our directors and our staff, and I've had the pleasure of working with them for five years. And for them to have put this document together with you is really a way forward for us to actually evaluate what's going on and to make things better for our community and our students. So I just want to thank everyone who worked on it, Dr. Velez, and Mrs. Lash, and Mr. Arce, and Mrs. Dais, and everyone else, all the other directors. I, I know the amount of work that goes into something like this because this is something tangible now. And when people say, what are you people doing to make sure my kid is reading, or writing, or learning, or is, the fact that we have everybody who's involved, Jess Caponegro, Jess with attendance, nutrition people, custodial people, bus drivers, everyone, part of that process is really important. And so I think it's a great start. Thank you.
All I can say is, is that for someone who, when you supervise student teachers before you become a board member, you get to travel to so many school districts, and you get to learn about how all of these different school districts, for myself in Orange County, not in Riverside County, but in Orange County, Orange County and LA, how they operate. There is no other district that I know of, and I have experienced, I've gone to these board meetings with these student teachers, there is no other district that has done what we have done here and what we have accomplished, all of us together. So I commend all of you, the superintendent. I mean, this, to me, this is going to be something that I think other school districts are going to grab onto.
We're going to have to copyright it.
It's, because it is so unique. I mean, no other district has this. So we are standing out, and I, like I said, I appreciate you, Mr. Superintendent, and everyone who worked on this, because there was a lot of people, and, and the subcommittee members that, that did, that did this. I mean, because, like I said, we started out in a certain place, and we ended up somewhere totally different, which is, we really did. I mean, it was, and it was, it's very cool. So that's that. And any other discussion? Go ahead.
So I would like to say thank you to those of you in the room who have contributed so much. I know that it takes a lot of special people to put this together and be honest with looking at the material and where we'd like to go. There's the old adage that to whom much is given, much is required. And I think if, as leaders, you feel that, and there's a trickle down into the district where staff and teachers feel supported, it's going to be so important. I'm, I'm going to speak to something that I hope that we can improve on. I want to be sure that when it comes to the culture, whether you're a teacher, or whether you're in security, or some other aspect of working across this district, that you feel heard in a fair and equitable way. Because sometimes there's people that kind of work up here, and there's people that work down here, and there's that meeting in the middle of the spirit where people need to feel appreciated, whether they're boots on the ground or they're at the very top. And I think there are times where people have walked away from us or had situations where they've felt either retaliation or not heard. And I think if we can just dig deep and remember we're not walking in another's shoes, and if we can seek to understand in, and if at each site, as Dr. Komrosky mentioned, it's a city, we can really task those leaders to get down on the level of every person that's there to hear them, because sometimes they're not heard. And I think it's easy for us as people to be so busy and to overlook things. The people business is the hardest in the world. So I want to acknowledge that all of you bring so much, but then what can we do to put in front of us so that the consensus out there in the public with teachers who are being trained in colleges is, I want to go there where I'm supported.
Thank you, Mrs. Wiersman.
Thank you.
Melissa, do you want to say anything here?
Sure. I would just like to say thank you to everyone who does that behind-the-scenes work in order to just make sure that everyone in our community, all the students, all the teachers, all the parents, feel supported. I don't have much else to say, just know that even though a lot of students might not say it to your face, we do, we are really grateful for everything that you do, and I'm really honored to be a part of such a supportive community.
Thanks, Melissa. Okay, so we made a motion, and we. Okay, so we made a motion, and we, we got a second, right? Okay, so.
I think we're done.
Yeah, let's go forth.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Weirzma?
Yes.
Komrosky?
Yes.
Barham?
Yes. The motion passes unanimously. Let's see, we, we have no public comments, right? We're, we're done. Okay, so we're done with that? Okay, so the next regular board meeting is, it's August 26th. It's 26th. No worries, no worries. August 26th. And with that, this meeting is adjourned today, Monday, July 25.